A meeting to order, and Mr. Manager, I think we have some presentations.
Yes, sir. It's caught my cut, got me unaware. The first up is Ron Williams, Deputy City Manager. You may recall during the council retreat, we had a presentation discussing the future of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Mr. Williams would like to continue that conversation.
Oh, sure. Please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So as the manager said, you may recall, Bill Hanbury performed services for us in late fall and continuing up to your retreat with an analysis of the structure and the organization of the Convention and Visitors Bureau Department. He brought a recommendation to you to continue into the next phase, asking for us to stand up a task force in order to look at three models that have been proposed for an evolution of the CBB. We've been on pause, obviously, in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, and we'd like to pick back up on that with the retirement of several of the key executives of the department. We are at a critical juncture, and especially going into the next phases with the Sports Center opening, and a need to have a better performing destination marketing organization, we'd like to recommend and ask your cooperation in standing up this task force and working with Mr. Hanbury to continue the work over the next proposed three to six months in order to come to a conclusion hopefully this fall and move forward with an evolution of a model. This is a recommendation that worked with Bill on, had discussion with Mr. Tower as well over the past week. This was a model of the type of representation that was used for San Antonio, who went through a similar exercise about a year or two ago. And so we recommend this perhaps this evening, if we could have a recommendation for two council members, and then we could work with you to try to get this up and running, hopefully in July would be our goal, Mayor.
Okay.
The next steps would be that Mr. Hanbury has continued to help us in executive advisory role during the pandemic. He's been an advisor on our marketing. He's actually going to be here on the ground in our offices more through the summer, and would like to be, we would have him as the support for the work of the task force. Of course, we'll need the human resources, finance, and attorney's office, the manager's office to assist with that as well, but really Bill would be the person tasked with providing the information to the task force and helping with the decision making and benchmarking of the other organizations that are across the United States. We also have been working with human resources for, to stand up a search for an executive that can run parallel to that, and we'd like the engagement of the task force to do that. It'd be with the understanding, and we've had conversation in the industry about the notion that the department could evolve into this other model, but that it does take enough time to search for what's often referred to as a CEO for a destination marketing organization. It would take enough time that the conclusion of that would be an opportunity for them to vet some candidates in whatever model that we would have.
Is it, is that it?
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Moss.
I have a lot of discussion. The preface statement that we need a better performance organization is being made, but the report hasn't really said that the reason why the current system's not performing isn't because of the market, isn't because of larger issues, and in fact is organizationally derived. So I think your initial conclusion is somewhat prejudicial to the objectivity of the effort. But going back, if you look at the recommended task force, I don't see any citizens on here. Now, this, the people who own this government aren't all these little special interest groups.
We're certainly open to recommendations.
They're all 530,000 people, and the people on here are representing the interests of these groups. But who's speaking for the public? Who's on this group that's not in the industry? And this is front-loaded, that I think you can probably conclude what the answer is before we get started. So I think this is a false representation that there's any objective analysis taking place here. Further, if you walk to the fact that you're looking for this executive search, and all of you have been telling us that no one will take this job for what we pay, though I know we had an interview from a city manager from a town where it's inside government, very successful, and they do operate within government salary structure, so I'm kind of interested that we're starting to search before we even know what we can pay, when what pays probably is a factor of your search. So, Mr. Mayor, I am concerned that, on this representation, that who's the person that's bringing the skeptical view, who's asking the hard questions, and who isn't like, you know, a dog drinking water when he's been on a five-mile walk? They're just laughing up what's coming from the consultant, because that's what we, the path that we're on. And so any pretense that there's some objective look here is false. There's not. We need citizens who are well-skilled, and it has to have a better balance. Special interest gets all the votes, two council members. We already know one council member who's advocating, in effect, kind of for the move. I have real problems with the structure and with the fact that there's any possibility of objectivity with this composition. Who's doing the red teaming? Who's asking the hard questions? Who's not truly bought into the answer? It's none of these people on this list. This is like asking for the safety inspection of oil rigs, and you have all the people from Exxon, Mobil, and Texaco on the inspection team. I mean, that's not exactly how our processes work. And if this is a strong idea, then there ought to be at least 60-40 split. The industry has some right because they benefit, but the taxpayers, it's their sovereignty that someone's suggesting that we give away and still provide a subsidy to its operation. And so I think this is a flawed presentation. I can't support this approach. I don't think any reasonable person who values our public trust could endorse this lopsided of a membership for someone making recommendations to this body. This is, I don't know how to say it, this is just blatant pandering to special interest groups.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tower.
I want to give Mr. Williams a chance to respond, but I would just point out the three business representatives are from other industry sectors. Those are not from the sectors that are served.
True, but they're not everyday working citizens who pay taxes, who are, and they're not.
I beg to differ. I don't know, there will be working citizens who pay taxes, and their companies may pay even more taxes, but I'm not arguing with you, Mr. Moss, about my willingness to expand this committee or see it expanded. I'm just not sure it requires being such a negative input to begin with. I think they would welcome outside input.
Okay, anybody else?
Indeed, that's one of the purposes of it, of getting other industry sectors involved.
Okay. And Mr. Williams, what's the feasibility of getting a few, you know, public members on board with us?
It's your task force, Mayor. It was merely a recommendation, and of course, the task force's job is to bring a recommendation to you. We certainly would expect that all those that participate would be citizens or residents of the task force, while they might be from different business sectors. And certainly, the inclusion of two council members represents the interest of the people. But it's entirely your decision. We wanted to suggest that it not be too large, so it's unwieldy. It is, it has a very focused task, and certainly, the objectivity of any executive or person participating would be understood that that's their goal.
Right. Mr. Wood.
Yeah, I agree with what Mr. Tower said on this. You know, when you look at this, and I understand where Mr. Moss is talking about with respect to having citizen involvement, but, you know, we're looking at citizens, granted, who are involved in this industry, and I think that's important. And I don't mind if we add a couple of, you know, regular citizens, or however John wants to define them, but I think it's important that it does not become an unwieldy committee that does this. I mean, I, you know, I thoroughly enjoyed the opportunity I had to talk to this consultant months ago and just listening to his experience in different areas and all that. And like Mr. Moss said, I think there's, you know, we heard from manager candidates that had it both internal and external, and it was, you know, the success was varying, but I think he would also agree that a lot of the manager candidates said that we needed to do something with our existing convention business because it's not as good as it needs to be. So I like the recommended task force. I don't mind adding some additional seats to it, but I just want to make sure it doesn't become some, you know, 20, 30-person big thing, but I agree with Mr. Tower.
Ms. Abbott, and then Mr. Belucci.
Thank you. I think I would just like to add my support to adding additional citizen members as well. To add just a different perspective, this organization is supposed to market the city as a whole, and I know when I talk to business owners more inland, they often feel left out. So I think we would greatly benefit from a perspective of maybe having more of a varied in terms of geographical representation on the body, just so we can see how do we incorporate, not just the oceanfront, but how do we incorporate the entire city and make sure that when whatever this organization ends up being, it's best fit to really market the entire city. So that would be more where I would prefer to be.
Good. Mr. Belucci.
Well, thank you. I just want to take a chance to express my support for including more voices into the conversation. And from what I gathered from Mr. Williams' comments, I think he would be agreeable to that, and the other folks who are participating in this discussion sound to be agreeable to that as well. So I don't see any reason why we can't add people from diverse points of view. In fact, I think that's the only way we'll be successful, is to have just a great cross-section of citizens, stakeholders, business leaders, civic leaders. Because at the end of the day, having citizens and civic leaders involved in the discussion about how we promote our city and attract people here for business and for hospitality is going to be critical and crucial, and indeed, those are our best ambassadors. So I think that's great, and I look forward to seeing an opportunity for more voices to participate than less. But my question is related to the executive search, and that will run parallel with the task force. Just for the sake of discussion, I mean, two of the options here are hybrid public, private foundation, or authority, or moving into a private nonprofit would be a transformational shift in the way it operates. So could you just share with me your thoughts about how, and from what I understand about CBVs, it's a competitive, it's a competitive pool of people, even among those who are interested in the public jobs. In some cases, you're bringing in, most cases, often bringing in people from out of the market to move into the community. So I'm just wondering if it's, if you could share with me what that might look like. In other words, is it worth bringing someone in if we're going to make it, if there's going to be, just for the purposes of saying that we are going to move to a hybrid public or to a public model, private nonprofit, what does that look like? I mean, you're going to bring someone on. So the recommendation is to start the process while the task force is doing their work. And ideally, it would be at some phase later, once the task force is starting to see which way is the recommended option. It takes a good three to six months to, at a minimum, to recruit executives, as y'all know, going through what you just went through. And so the conversations would be with the candidates. We've talked to a couple of search firms that have had experience in this, and it's not unfounded that they would go through a process, understanding that there is something on the table that is going to, you know, give the direction to where it's going to go. If you wait, though, then you're, you know, you're coming out the gates limping without an executive. The idea would be that they're tailored, they're parallel, and that ultimately, you could, whatever conclusion the task force had, then have candidates that would be able to be interested in that option. So just for clarity, starting the process doesn't necessarily indicate that the process would finish with a filled position? If the direction went into one of those two options, starting the process gives the opportunity for candidates to be sort of ready to go if indeed... Towards the latter part of the phase. Yes, sir. Got it. Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Moss.
Just a question, is the reason why privatizing the whole function wasn't an option, divesting of the role and letting them, and just collect the revenue through the transactions that take place?
Let me answer one way. The number three, number three is really privatization. Most destination marketing organizations are nonprofits. They're not necessarily a private corporation. So that is the private, that's the privatization option, number three is.
But that means there would be no, privatization means there'd be no public subsidies? Because this is not a public dash, and there'd be no source of public money in your privatization option?
That is to be determined, Mr. Moss. I know you have that idea, that is, we don't know of any destination marketing organizations in the United States that have that scenario, but we certainly will be bringing and benchmarking in those ideas to the task force if that's an option.
Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Wilson.
Adding some citizens from across the city is a good idea, but I do think we need to move forward. We really are at a crossroads. We've got our sports center coming on. We, after losing Mr. Van Damme, we really got to get moving with this, and our tourism business really needs to move forward, and we have a beautiful convention center that needs to be filled, especially after we get this coronavirus behind us, and we're at a critical time. We need to get moving, so I support this. Thank you.
Okay.
Question.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Ron, number one, have you been working with anybody on the council on this, other than Mr. Tower?
Predominantly Mr. Towers. We've had significant, we have a lot of meetings of those that are involved and depend on the CBB to do their work.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So between the two of you, maybe the two of you could tell me, what is the process that you anticipate taking? Is it to first interview possible people?
No, sir.
Or is it first to establish what you want done and then interview people?
Through the work of the task force, to establish what evolution of the CBB would be determined, tailoring into that at the end of it for the selection of a CEO to take command.
The reason I'm asking the question is, you know, if you're going to interview people for this particular job, it seems to me that it might be beneficial to interview people, get the benefit of their knowledge as to what things would need to be done, and what processes would need to take place, and what objectives would need to be looked for in order to establish who is the best person to do the job. You know, if we, if we have a task force that's made up of people who are not involved in the convention business and don't understand the day-in and day-out issues that arise and so forth in, you know, acquiring these conventions and making them happen, and the procedures that are involved and everything, it would seem to me that they're not going to be qualified to select a director. So it's, which comes first, the chicken or the egg here?
Yes, sir. It's a great point, and that's the work of the task force, and that's the opportunity that Bill will provide the conduit to bring expertise of other executives that would be more than willing to provide their knowledge to the task force to help us evaluate our model and to move forward. So San Antonio, going through their experience, would be someone we would lean on and probably have a WebEx call with them to talk through it. Fort Lauderdale, Washington DC, some of the other DMOs that have had similar experience or either have similar assets, that will be, that will be the type of information that's provided to the task force.
Okay. Mr. Moss.
Obviously, it won't be, it'll be us, not the commission has this discussion, but ultimately, we're delegating away, or potentially delegating away, a sovereignty that we have on making decisions that ultimately come from someone who directly reports to us and is directly accountable to us and is directly accountable to the voters, to create an organization, not like some others we have in the region, that aren't accountable to anyone other than to themselves, but yet spending public money. So there is a discussion here philosophically, which is independent of these other issues, is whether or not it's in the public's best interest of accountability and trust to delegate away the powers they've consented to give us and that we just give away. And we're also admitting that in our current, with our current executives of our own that work for us, that we have a problem we can't fix within the organic nature of government. That's also what we're admitting. So there's a couple tests here that have to be made, independent of the convenient conclusions that they might come to. There are some more fundamental discussions that we can't ask the commission to answer, but that we have to answer to the public for. And I'm not eager, as anyone could tell, to further delegate away our power that we only get granted by consent by the voters to someone who's not elected to make decisions that influence our community. There's a big issue here beyond the dollars and cents and beyond all the fast talk. There's fundamental governance questions which we will have to answer, and only we can answer it. So I hope when this time comes, we don't get distracted by the answer before we resolve this, even a question that we believe fundamentally we should be answering. And we're not having that discussion today, obviously, because we're moving ahead. But we shouldn't act on that recommendation until we've answered the question that says that's even a recommendation we even want to act on, because maybe it doesn't have legitimacy to be acted on. I just don't want that question to get lost.
Okay, the question at this point is, you know, do we subscribe to add, you know, other public members on? And the question then comes, how many, and then the selection process. Ms. Wilson, you have any recommendations?
Three more people.
Three? Okay.
I think three will work. I'd like to see us reduce some of the representation of some of the other industries as well, reduce the group, offset it, and keep the group size the same by reducing some of the industry representation that's on there.
Would the selection process be that we solicit applications? You know, we have a hiatus next week, but if we solicit, you know, interested parties to come in, and then we can do that as part of the, Mr. Wood, your thoughts?
Well, we have to, I would assume we need to pass an ordinance creating this task force, and then the body of the ordinance would indicate the membership, and then we would, we would do that. So it might not be, since we're not meeting next week, it would probably be the first meeting in July, where we would, we'd be able to pick people and everything.
Okay, and that way, in our discussions on formulating the ordinance, we can, you know, come up with some of the criteria. Would that be acceptable, Mr. Williams?
Please, yes, sir.
Ms. Abbott.
Just a clarifying question. We are appointing the members, though, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we weren't delegating that, but we're going to be the ones picking them.
I would imagine the industry representatives would be delegated from the industries, so whoever the resort advisory commission has, and whoever the hotel association and all that, because, I mean, we wouldn't necessarily know who, who the representative, I only know one person, Atlantic Avenue Association, and I imagine he didn't want to be on everything, but maybe he does.
Yeah, but I think maybe the public members we should have.
No, I think the industry should come forward and tell us who it is that's going to represent them, and we should get the same biographical information we get on any citizen. They're not in some special status.
Can I, can I just, I don't want to beat this down. I just, I think a lot of our boards and commissions and our, our, all of these little groups of people we appoint, we have an issue with, we always seem to appoint the same people to these memberships, and we don't get a good selection of diversity. We get the same people, and I'm grateful that they're, that those individuals are so dedicated to our city, but I think we desperately need fresh perspective across the board, and I think this is a great opportunity. Here we're creating something new. Let's ask these industry leaders to find somebody who is not serving on a board, who they feel confident in, and say, bring them to the table, because I think we'll end up getting some, something really special out of that. So it would be, it would be my preference that we appoint them all ourselves, but we ask these industries, these people we know, to find somebody who's not currently serving on a board or commission.
Any comment on that? And Mr. Belucci.
Well, I can certainly appreciate Councilmember Abbott's perspective on that. However, I think that for a discussion that's as important as this, there are certain people that I can think of, just a few off the top of my head. And while we do weigh heavily on some people, there are going to be certain individuals who have so much expertise, so much knowledge, that it would be really useful to us and beneficial. So I like to sort of see, get a mix of what you're referring to, and I think it's, if we're going to identify that there are specific organizations that are part of the task force, then I think we should probably defer to them about who should be the representative in that, in that we give them that opportunity, and that it wouldn't be a disqualifier to serve on another board or commission, because we could lose some of the most valuable perspective we have on a discussion that's really important. So I think your point is well-made, but maybe there's room for a hybrid, or for bringing in some people who are new voices, but also maintaining the wisdom and perspective of those who are more established and experts.
If I could respond, I'm comfortable with a hybrid, and I'm open to that. I just would really like us to try to move more aggressively towards trying to find people who have not previously been engaged and engage them. I think we will get good ideas from doing that.
And Mr. Williams, maybe if you pass that on to the representatives, and, you know, as they're making their selections, but I think at this point going forward, you know, we'll proceed with the ordinance, and that way we can have a more robust discussion, you know, about, you know, some of the composition and the appointments and everything going forward.
Is it ordinance or is it a resolution?
Was it an ordinance or a resolution? For the...
Resolution. That's what I thought.
Resolution, okay. The resolution to form this, and, you know, we'll certainly iron out the details and take things into consideration. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Leahy.
At this point in time, I'd like to ask Bill Landfair and Kevin Kemp to come up, and they will give you the planning item glimpse.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. As you know, I'm not, Mr. Landfair, Mr. Landfair or Mr. Kemp, but unfortunately, Mr. Kemp is not available, and all the items that I will be briefing you today are short-term rental applications. We're doing the glimpse for the July 7th and July 14th meetings. Starting on July 7th, we have seven items. Most of them are along the oceanfront, the bayfront, and one in the Rose Hall District. All these items were heard at the March 11th Planning Commission public hearing, with all the requests recommended for approval by both staff and the Planning Commission, and all but one item was on the consent agenda. Starting with item one by Timothy Hanlon at 4504 Ocean View Avenue in the Bayside District. It's located one block from the Chesapeake Bay in the Shore Drive area, in an area where short-term rentals are common. There is a duplex that was constructed in 1996 on the property, and only one unit of the duplex is requesting to, requesting a short-term rental. Within a quarter-mile radius, there are approximately 30 registered short-term rentals, and five short-term rental conditional use permits are currently under review. This is a three-bedroom unit. One of the units on the right is requesting the short-term rental. They do have three off sheet parking spaces, including the one parking space located within the garage. Staff and Planning Commission does recommend approval of this application.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Who, is it the applicant that lives on the other side, or is it a neighbor?
I believe it's a neighbor, but I'll have to double-check.
And I think you told me the last time that the neighbors were required to be okay with it, or...
Correct. They're required to sign the disclosure statement noting that they're, they're okay with the application moving forward.
Okay, so I assume it got this far, it has that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Tower.
Mr. Ton, I was looking, this is just a procedural issue. I know this is just the glimpse forward, but looking through the book for the ones that are up for today, they have the maps that show where the existing and... that are up for today, they have the maps that show where the existing and where the other units are in the neighborhood. Is there any way when we get these glimpses, we can get that map, and particularly in color? It's very difficult, one, to discern in black and white what the, the shadings are hard, hard to determine, and number two, it, it gives us, even though it's just a glimpse, if we could get those with this material rather than wait until the next week, it might be helpful.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
It was oversight on my part when I reviewed it.
Not necessarily. I didn't mean it as an oversight, just something I would appreciate if it's, if it's available at the time.
Yes, sir, it is. I believe we, when we were having 30 or 40 items at a time, we were trying our best to condense it, but since we've, we've made these more manageable, we will provide the disclosure.
Particularly, I just noticed these are in color, and then when we get them the next week, they're not.
Yes, sir.
So, I'd like, that's why, if we're going to get a color package, I'd like to get the map.
It was included by my staff after, after some notes, but it is not in your packet. We'll make sure that we include it, Mr. Tower.
Thank you.
So, go, go back to that map if you could.
Sure.
So, the, there's been none that have been approved in this area, correct?
That's correct.
So, the ones that say registered, are they grandfathered?
The ones that are registered are on our 3-1-1 list. We have not gotten zoning applications from all of them to determine if they are all grandfathered or not.
So, what do you do?
So, we, as we've been getting caught up, our goal is to then go through the list and contact the property owners and say they need to file their application with zoning. So, there are 700 on that list, 700 on that list. We've gotten about 200 applications, so it is next on our things to continue and move forward.
I understand this is Mr. Jones's district, but, but there's a lot there, and I don't see a single one that's been approved.
Those that are registered may be grandfathered.
Yep, Ms. Moss.
Are you referring those locations to the Commissioner of Revenue who may have more assets to find out if they're registered with him or not?
The registered comes from the Commissioner of Revenue. They are paying taxes.
So, they are paying taxes?
Yes, sir.
But they may not be grandfathered?
Correct, because they may not meet all the zoning criteria that was established by council last year.
So, let's assume that they weren't grandfathered, they're operating illegally, that's what they're doing, they don't get approved, let's say they don't, even if they do get approved, what is the penalty for operating illegally?
It would be a zoning violation, and would need to go through the zoning violation process.
And so, the civil penalties that we applied, we're looking at, would apply?
If it's pa, yes, if it's passed, that is correct.
So, okay, I think when these things do come up, I'd like to have the city attorney assessment, because in the event that they find out they aren't operating, just what is the, what are they liable, what could they be liable for under our ordinances we've adopted? I think the council would want to know that, just to make sure that we're not creating incentive for people to not, because they're not volunteering to come down here and file applications.
You're right, yes, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Wilson.
I'm confused. So, they're paying taxes, but that doesn't mean they registered with the city, is that right?
So, there are, so there's a distinction that I want to make sure we make. The Commissioner of Revenue had a registration process to file for taxes. Last year, the city council adopted regulation that said anybody that, that was considered to be grandfathered, to continue to operate without a conditional use permit, had to meet all the zoning criteria and be registered prior to July 2018, 18, 19, 18. So, we would need to take a look to see if they meet all the zoning criteria. So, there may be some that have four bedrooms that only have one parking space. If they do not meet the criteria, they would be in violation, so, or they would not, they would not be considered grandfathered. So, what we do have is, we do know that they have been paying taxes on it. They have registered with the Commissioner of Revenue and are paying taxes.
But it's also a financial penalty if they didn't register, correct? Was there a $500 penalty if they didn't register?
Is it?
Yes, the Commissioner of Revenue can, and does have the ability to assess the penalty. It's monetary, I don't recall how much, but I think it was.
I think it was $500, so if they haven't registered...
So, the ones that are on this list that are labeled as registered are registered with the Commissioner of Revenue, so they are paying. We have not done the full review of the 700-plus applica, of 700-plus of those properties to see if they meet the zoning criteria.
So, if they haven't met the zoning criteria, other than a zoning violation, are they stopped from doing the short-term rentals?
That, that would, since they do not meet the zoning criteria, if they do not meet the zoning criteria, they would not be considered grandfathered, and they would not be permitted to operate.
But it may take a while.
Yes.
Hey, anybody else?
If I may.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Okay, so we have two things here, based on what you just said, Bobby. If they're, if they're registered and they meet the zoning, zoning criteria, then they're considered grandfathered, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
But they have to have both. They have to have been registered, and they have to have met the zoning criteria. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And what if they have registered, but they don't meet the zoning criteria? Are they considered grandfathered?
No, they are not.
Okay, and do we know who they are?
We have to go through the list systematically, so what we've been doing is we've been dealing with the influx of applications we have, including the 100 to 200 or so that have actually applied from that same list that we're going through and reviewing. We need to go through the rest of the list, one by one, to see if they meet the requirements. One, we want them to apply so we have their contact information, and then two, if they don't, or if they don't meet the criteria, we'll need to issue zoning violations.
Well, let's say that they've registered, but they don't meet the zoning criteria, and then they come in and file for a short-term rental permit. I'm assuming you're going to recommend against them, then, is that correct?
Correct. It, through the current conditional use process, though, the city council may alter any of those requirements that are required through section, through that section in, about short-term rentals. So, it would be up to the council whether to grant them or not. But as far as us, if we've already denied them in the review showing that they don't meet the zoning criteria, we would, we would recommend denial unless they can come up with a solution for their issues.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Tower.
Just one question, and this may be for the city attorney. Again, and if it's, if it's repeated, I apologize, but is there anything we can do? The people that are applying, the people that are, have registered but have not applied, those, they don't really have to apply, assuming they are in conformity, right?
They still have to submit an application with all the contact information, meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance, so-
Which, which presumably they have not done, if they're just listed as registered there, right?
That is correct.
So, is there any way to penalize those people? So, it's not, it doesn't seem fair to have every applicant, you know, whether they're timely or not, get exactly the same treatment. That just doesn't seem fair to me.
Again, if the civil penalties are approved, once we bring forward any changes, if they are not, if they do not have approval from, if they don't have, I don't want to call it a permit, but if they don't have a zoning approval registered with the, not registered either, because that's a different term, if they don't have zoning approval with, in our system, then we could ostensibly charge them with a, with a civil penalty for being not in compliance. So, yes, we could do that, but we would need to do that. Other than that, we would have to, at this point in time, cite them with a zoning violation.
And so, we would need to actually pass an ordinance that has the civil penalties attached, we did, that we now have referred back to planning. Would we have to, if we wanted to just pass an ordinance that did that, okay, would we have to send it back to planning also?
Well, you, you have sent that over to planning, and planning will get it back to you within 100 days, and then you will have to pass it or not pass it.
Right, but that involves other things besides the civil penalties. If we wanted to pass a civil penalty ordinance with, do we, would, by itself, would that still require referral to planning?
That you would still require Planning Commission's recommendation. You'd still have to go through planning.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Moss.
I just want to make sure I understood Mr. Tower's question, because it didn't make sense, because currently, if you're blue, there's no incentive to ever file an application, and you're just waiting on the pace of the, of the government to be able to look at you.
You mean if you're gray?
The part that says registered, isn't it a light blue?
Well, it looks gray from me. There's a blue on the top for-
No, I'm not talking about the bright blue, I'm talking about that bottom, kind of like a fade blue, whatever that, anyway, the registered applicants, whether they're grandfathered or not, they still have obligations to file some amount of information, right? But to his point, it was like, oh, there's, there's no incentive for, I'll call it market compliance, for lack of a better term, free market. You're consumed, all we could best do is send people a notice saying, hey, you need to do this, and then still there's no, and you're swamped. I understand, active, non-active people, that, I think that's the point that I think Councilman Tower is getting to, is that some people, maybe out of ignorance, I'm going to assume, not, I'm not going to assume any ill intent, but they're not being held to the same standard as others, and it's really our lack of capacity, not capability, but lack of capacity, that allows us to hold everyone to the same standard. So, I'm not saying I have the solution, but I'm just saying the Planning Commission, but I want to make sure I had captured that correctly, that-
Yes, sir.
That's where we're at. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Tower, for bringing that up.
And just to clarify also, staff did mail letters to, when the ordinance was, in November, I think it was December, after the ordinance became effective, to remind folks, if you are on the registered list, because we have all these mailing addresses, you need to register. That's where we received our first influx of applications, but it was not the full amount.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Item number two is by BQ Ventures LLC. It's at 406 23rd Street in units A1, B1, and B2, and it's located in the Beach District. It is a three-unit in an apartment building in the Old Beach neighborhood, and again, in an area where short-term rentals are typically expected, being one-third mile from the resort area. Within a quarter-mile radius, there are approximately 70 registered short-term rentals, with 16 short-term rental applications under review, and four short-term rental conditional use permits approved already at this time. So, there are two two-bedroom units, one four-bedroom unit. They do have the required parking on site. Planning Commission and staff did recommend for approval for this.
Mr. Tower.
I'm just going to point out quickly that, well, it may be expected to have short-term rentals because they're within a third of a mile of the oceanfront. There are a number of people in the Old Beach overlay who very much are not, are hoping not to have, them at least not to have them, as many as they appear they're going to be in that area.
Item number three is by Josetta Danner at 518 14th Street, located in the Beach District. It's a four-bedroom short-term rental request on 14th Street near the oceanfront, just south of Cook Elementary School. It is a four-bedroom unit that, or four-bedroom, single-family dwelling that does have four parking spaces. After previous council hearings, staff did review the existing driveway apron, going back as far as our oldest pictometer, our oldest aerial photography. This apron in some fashion has previously existed. When the street improvements on 14th Street came in, the city recognized that these, this driveway existed previously and, and replaced it, which is why this driveway is new, that was replaced by the city. So, again, I went back as far as I could in the aerial photography. A driveway of some fashion and with access and an older apron previously existed, so although the width of the driveway is not in compliance, it is, it has been there for a very long time in accordance, and was recently replaced by the city during the 14th Street Staff does recommend approval, and eight to zero, the Planning Commission recommends approval of this application.
Bobby, I'm sorry, can you go back to that apartment? I have a question. So, is it currently being used as a normal apartment complex, or is it, well, let me re, do we have any history on how the property has been used in the past, in terms of, was it traditional, like, six-month, year-long leases, or was it always some kind of a vacation rental?
I do not have that in front of me. It is Zoned A12, which is an apartment zoning complex. Typically, if this was not Zoned A12, we would not allow them to utilize the secondary structures. However, it is an apartment complex zoning district, which that prohibition does not exist.
Okay.
So, it's my understanding when we walk through this application with staff that this has been in some type of rental format, at least for the two units in the rear, I'm, yes, with at least the two units in the rear, and then I think the, the property owner ends up moving forward with the, with the residents going to short-term rentals.
Do we have a more comprehensive photograph of this property? It just, because it looks like a single-family home from the front, and then?
We will, I will make sure we-
I'm just cur, I, more, I guess, it's just a policy question for the body in that I am a little worried about short-term rentals taking up the affordable rentals for long-term leasing, and that's why I'm curious on the history of the property, because if it has been in the past, typically leased for, you know, six or 12-month periods, I worry that when we allow them to go to short-term rentals, all of a sudden, what was a reasonable place for people to live is now a, you know, it's, it, I mean, maybe that's the way the market is going. I just, I think it's a, it becomes a policy question, is if we want to allow apartment complexes to become short-term rentals, and in effect, I think those act more as hotels because they're all clustered together like that, so, I don't, it's just, just something I've been thinking about.
Item number four is by Kathleen Page Simmons and Grant Simmons at 3608 Dupont Circle, located in the Bayside District. Staff and Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. It's an existing three-bedroom, single-family dwelling. They do not have any parking on site, but they do have the ability to construct parking. They will construct the parking with a pervious material that will be approved by the Planning Department. They have not come to a decision on exactly what that material will be. They have been going back and forth between gravel versus a grass paver type of system, but they will be required to install these three parking spaces prior to their operation. Item number five is Creekside Getaway LLC at 3214 Creekside Drive in the Rose Hall District, located in Scarborough Square. There's only one short-term rental within a quarter-mile of this location. This is a townhouse community constructed in 1985. It is Zoned A12. The request is for a two-bedroom short-term rental unit, and two off-shoot parking spaces are provided on the property. Item number six is by Christopher Massaro at 209 55th Street in the Lynn Haven District, Zoned R5R in the North End overlay. It's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling, and in an area where short-term rentals are typical, although it is on the west side of Atlantic Avenue in the North End overlay. They do have the required three parking spaces available on site, going towards their garage in the rear. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval. Last one on the July 7th agenda is by Nick Trayvon at 40, 421 21st and a Half Street, located in the Beach District. It is a three-bedroom unit of a duplex located in the OR Oceanfront Resort Form-Based Code You will end up seeing a number of these applications come in for this property. This was developed together. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, six units on each of these, and I think a number of them are all applying for short-term rentals. So, you will see these in reiterations for, because they are, there are different property owners of each of the condo units. This one unit right here at 421 on the 21st and a Half Street is a, one of the units of that duplex that is attached here to 423. It is a three-bedroom short-term rental unit. They have three parking spaces, including the space located within the garage. Staff and Planning Commission recommend approval of this request as well. For the July 14th agenda, there are 12 applications. Again, these were all heard on March 11th. March 11th was a very heavy short-term rental Planning Commission application. They are, they are located in the Beach, Lynn Haven, and Bayside Districts. All of them were recommended for approval by Staff and Planning Commission, with all but two on the consent agenda for Planning Commission. First one is by Ocean Rental Properties LLC at 607 20th Street in the Beach District. It's located in the Oceanfront Resort Form-Based Code District. This is a part of three applications- This is a part of three applications that are owned by the same property owner, applying for short-term rentals. They are proposing to have a, it is a three-bedroom home, they are proposing to add an additional parking space with a pervious material here beside parking space number two, to meet the parking requirement.
Mr. Towers.
Does that mean they're taking down that tree?
No, it looks like it's. No, it looks like they, they are proposing to, to work around that tree, Mr. Towers.
Okay. Oh, I see, I see, I was looking up for.
Item number two is by Ocean Rental Properties LLC, at 609 20th Street. This is a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling unit. It is located approximately a quarter-mile from the resort beach, in the OR Form-Based Code District. They do show that they have two parking spaces located in the front and the driveway, they will also install two additional parking spaces in the rear, off of the alley. Staff and Planning Commission do recommend approval for this as well. The third item is by Ocean Rental Properties LLC, at 611 20th Street, adjacent to that property as well. It is a three-bedroom, short-term rental unit request for a conditional use permit. Three off-street parking spaces are required, and three are provided, with one being located inside the garage. Item number four is by VB Vive LLC, at 1728 Baltic Avenue, in the Beach District. This is a one unit of a 14-unit condominium that was constructed in, at the oceanfront in 1984. There are a number of short-term rentals registered, under review, and also approved by City Council in the, and within a quarter-mile radius. Each of the condo units have one parking space. There are seven guest parking spaces located at the site. The applicant, and per the condition in the ordinance, in the staff report, is planning to lease one of the guest parking spaces, or if they, if that lease happens to expire, they will, in order for them to continue to operate the short-term rental use, they would have to find a suitable off-street park, off-street parking space, either on-site or elsewhere within, that meet the requirements. Item number five is by Pucci LLC, at 208 27th Street, units 201, 202, 203, and 204. This is a mixed-use building, located in the OR, Oceanfront Resort Form-Based Code District. There's retail on the bottom, with four condominium units on the second and third floor. In the OR District, the retail that's on the first floor does not have a parking requirement. However, the site does have 12 parking spaces available to the four short-term rental uses. There are two two-bedroom units and two three-bedroom units, they're required to have 10 parking spaces, and 12 are provided on-site. And staff and, and Commission recommend approval of this request. Items number six and seven are by Camus Properties Incorporated, at 5870 and 5872 Northampton Boulevard, in the Bayside District. These are two units that are semi-detached, located on Northampton Boulevard. Each of them are three-bedroom, short-term rental units, requesting a conditional use permit. Six off-street spaces are required, three for each unit, and three are proposed to be provided, with the two additional spaces also acting as an ability to turn around, and also will be made of a pervious material, so that they can safely exit onto Northampton Boulevard. As we know, Northampton is not a safe road to back out onto, so we, staff required them to provide some type of turnaround. Item eight is that, is by 3300 Arctic Avenue LLC, at 3304 Arctic Avenue. This is a mixed-use property, it has a dentist's office located at the corner of 33rd and a Half Street, and Arctic Avenue, and a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling, located at the corner of Arctic and 33rd Street. The, it is three bedrooms, the property will be required to install three parking spaces of a pervious material, they plan on installing oyster shell with a timber border on this side of the property here, to obtain their three required parking spaces. Item number nine is at 716 16th Street, Unit A, in the Beach District. It is a duplex, it's the front unit of a duplex, three-bedroom, short-term rental unit. Three parking spaces are required, three, three parking spaces are provided, with two in the driveway, one in the two-car garage. The Unit B in the back, that has also a garage, has a separate driveway for their access to get back to their unit, and the proposed parking, or the existing parking does not impede access to the second unit. Item 10 is by Leonard Lyon, at 8709 Atlantic Avenue, and 116 88th Street, in the Lynn Haven It's a request for a conditional use permit for two short-term rental units in a duplex. One of the units is a three-bedroom, while the other unit is a one-bedroom unit. As you can see here, there's existing parking located off 88th Street for both of the units, partially improved in some fashion, used as parking for a very long time. They do, they are providing, if you can see where this truck is located, that is parking space number five, right here, and the other two, four parking spaces can be located in the driveway in a similar location. They are providing, their parking, although two, two of the parking spaces are located in the right-of-way, but clearly inside the, the driveway of the property, which is in this area here, and does not impede the pavement section or access along 88th Street.
And Mr. Wood?
Help me out with the parking in the right-of-way, because that, that's a common theme at, at the North Beach, because of the way these, these houses were built, and platted, and the narrow roads, and all that sort of thing. If for some reason, there, there's some sort of project that comes in, or the city has a need to take that right-of-way, or, or start using that right-of-way for something where parking would be inconsistent, does that terminate the, the ability to operate a short-term rental?
Based on looking at what they propose, they would no longer have access to these parking spaces, so they would have to, yes, it would cease unless they can provide additional parking spaces that would meet their criteria.
So, we've got a couple of those in, in here tonight, and, and I'm just curious, is there a, is there some, is there something we need to add into it, so that, so that we know that, or, I mean, for example, how, how would zoning know that all of a sudden 88th Street is 15 feet wider?
Staff is supposed to be reviewing each of these applications every year, there, so we're supposed to be aware of this, aware of any changes in this area, by looking through the applications. So, it would be through the normal review process if we saw that something changed. It is, it is possible that the property owner could also install a driveway and provide their parking in the rear, off of Atlantic Avenue, again.
Particular one, but I'm just.
Right.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Towers.
The CEP is up, what, every five years, am I right?
Correct, yes, sir.
So, we can see it then.
All right, item number 11 is at 8006 Atlantic Avenue, by Mary White, in the Lynn Haven District. It's a single-family home with three bedrooms, requesting a short-term rental conditional use permit. Three parking spaces are provided in this existing area, under this tree. There were speakers in opposition of the application, however, Staff and Planning Commission did recommend approval of the request.
Can we get a copy of what the opposition speakers were from the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir, it'll be in the, in the verbatim.
Thank you.
Item number 12, and the last item, is 21st Street Development LLC, at 417 21st Street, 419 21st Street, and 417 21st and a Half Street, as well as 419 21st and a Half Street. Similar as the other property, which was this one right here that you just looked at. The proposal is to request each of these units to be utilized as a short-term rental. Two of them are four-bedroom units, two of them are three-bedroom units. 14 on-site parking spaces are required, and 14 are provided, however, 10 of them are located on-site, in this parking plan layout here. And the other four spaces are located within a quarter-mile at an existing commercial establishment, where they have, at coastal ledge, where they have a signed letter of intent with the property owner to utilize those extra parking spaces, which by analysis, those spaces are not required for that development. Staff and Planning Commission also did recommend approval of this request.
Mr. Tahan, you've finished exactly on time.
Thank you, sir.
Way to go, I tell you. All right, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I will call to order the special formal session. Honorable members of City Council, in accordance with Virginia Beach Code 2-21, and by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session meeting of the Virginia Beach City Council, Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020, 5:00 P.M. City Council Chamber, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd Floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. The special former session, formal session will follow the regularly scheduled council workshop, which starts at 4:00 P.M. The purpose of this special formal session is for the City Council to hold agenda review, convene into closed session, and then at 6:00, consider the items in the published agenda. Citizens may comment either in person or virtually. If you would like to speak in person, or in a public hearing, or planning item, please call the City Clerk Office at 757-385-4303 and sign up. Be advised, there is limited seating available in City Council Chambers to ensure social distancing, as recommended by the CDC. If you wish to make comments virtually on the public hearing or planning items, please follow the two-step process. One, register for, at WebEx, at HTTS VB slash VBgov dot WebEx doc corp, VBgov slash onstage G P H P question mark T M T I D chat 7D F 1 3 3 C, that's a long one here, folks.
You'll need to read all of them.
Yeah, and, you know, the link is there, and, but also to register with the City Council by calling 757-385-4303 via email, or at abarns@vbgov.com prior to 3:30 on June 23rd, 2020. This special section will be broadcast on cable TV, WWW VBgov.com, and Facebook Live. Citizens are encouraged to submit their concerns to City Council prior to the special meeting via email at citycouncil@vbgov.com. Sincerely, Bobby Dyer. Roll call, everybody is present. Mr. Vice Mayor, can we do the agenda review?
Okay, ordinance resolutions, the first is ordinance to accept and appropriate $258,060 from Department of Justice for correctional center upgrades. Everybody okay with that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the next one is a resolution to reinstate all portions of the City Council speaker policy.
Any problems with that?
So, we don't have a date on that, I was wondering, since the governor said July 1, going into Phase 3, would that be a friendly amendment?
I think it would be, I was going to look for the date, because it might have been later, but I just said as long as we were there by August, I was.
Our next meeting's going to be later in July, so is that.
July 7th.
Okay, under planning, we have speakers on item 2, 6, and 7. 2, 6, and 7, we have one-on-one now?
I'm sorry, so.
Speaker for a bunch of things, right?
Yes, correct.
But we have speakers on 2, 6, and 7, so those three items would be heard. Item 1, Craig.
Hold on, hold on.
2, 6, and 7.
We're going to hear item 1, too.
Okay, I was just asking you that one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll hear item 1. Okay, item 3, Beach Borough Development LLC, 410 25th Street, 408 25th Street, Units A and B. Mr. Towers.
Unless there's speakers, I don't need.
So, what's your?
You've told them that consent agenda now?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm fine with me putting on.
Want to put on consent?
I heard a no vote for me.
Okay, so it's.
What, what did, I'm, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what Mr. Towers.
Item 3, he wants to put on consent.
Item 3, cast a no vote for me on that.
And I will also have a no vote.
Anybody else? Okay, item 4, Anthony S. Craig and Monica Malone Craig, Dan G. Pescariou, and Christina G. Maxim, short-term rental, 417 22nd and a Half Street, Beach District. Recommendation for that is denial.
Put on the consent for denial.
Consent for denial. Everybody okay with that? Five LBC Rentals LLC, 209 83rd Street, and that's in my district. I don't have a problem with that, but I'm saying three.
No.
So, no, Ms. Henley?
Henley, no.
Mr. Jones, okay.
No for me, too.
Okay, item 6, we, we may or may not have a speaker on this one, this is one I want to, if we don't have a speaker here, I'd like to defer this one indefinitely, there's issues with the, the structure of the property, and I've talked to Mr. Tahan, and I've also spoken with the opposition on it, so I don't think they're actually going to come. And Mr. Tahan, you've talked to the applicant as well?
Yes, sir, that is correct. The applicant has actually requested a deferral to June 24th, but again, it's.
I want to do it indefinitely, because I think there's more than that.
Yes, sir.
So, is everybody okay with that one? Okay, so we'll, we'll put that on consent indefinitely, provided the people don't, don't show up, okay?
Thank you.
All right, and then, item 7 is going to be heard, there's speakers, so.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, are we ready to move on to the closed session, okay? The Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemption from the open meetings allowed by Section 2.2, 3711A. Code of Virginia is amended for the following purposes. Personnel matters, discussion considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to the Section 2.2, 3711A1 appointments. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
Okay, we are recessed into close.